Ankhamaat. It is Thursday, so you know that means today is study session. So, um, we are picking up as we usually do, um, from where we left off last week. So, again, the book is Egyptian Magic by Wallace Budge. And I'm going to, I'm like, I always like to have the music on, but somehow I feel like it's always too loud. And I feel like I'm shouting, ah, out and out and mimshamshmak. Uh, oh, sorry, that'll be like an insider, so if anybody's watching this later, that means how are you? So, um, let's see, um, so forgive me, I have a headache today. Uh, but the show must go on, um, so my brain might be a little, um, as I'm going through. So please forgive me if I seem a little extra or a little under, if I'm not on the mark. Okay, so we left off on page thirty-five. Um, we're on the chapter that talks about amulets. So the specific amulet that's going to be talked about today is, as you say, in English, the scarab. Um, if you want to say, uh, if that was a neturu, that would be, um, keper. Uh, some people say kepera, depends on how you want to express it. So I'm like low-key showing off a little bit, but, um, like, can you see him? Yep, there he goes. So keper. Um, so that would be the representation that we are talking today as far as, um, the amulets are concerned. So, "From what has been said above it will be seen that the amulet of the heart, which was connected to the most important and most popular of the chapters for protecting the heart, was directed to be made in the form of a scarab at a very early date." That's interesting. Duasenat. Um, so that's, that's interesting unto itself. Look, I can't even get one sentence before I'm already like going into things. But, um, say lovey. So, um, I think that's interesting, just if you think about what keper represents. So like transformation, Ankhamaat, uh, transformation, um, like if you think about all the visuals, um, as my teacher Raasanku Keper has said before, like you picture the, um, the dung beetle, if you will, and, um, it's pushing this dung along. So it's like, okay, yeah, you're dealing with all this stuff. Uh, but what comes out of that is that the little babies are inside the dung. So it's like you're being protective, but you're willing to go through what it is you need to go through to kind of transform or bring about new life, things like that. So if you think about the idea that the thing that was supposed to protect your heart, the amulet for your heart, um, was a keper, I'm like, oh, that makes a lot of sense, because again, the importance of your heart and what that meant, and like we, you know, spent last study session talking about that. So I just think that's like a super interesting, um, see, look, there it goes, that goes my brain. Interesting concept, I'm sorry. So, all right, um, "We can trace the idea of what the Kometi U held about this insect as far back as the time of the building of the Mercut or the pyramids. Um, and that there is no doubt that they represented beliefs which even at an early period were very, very old." Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta shout out Papa Ganesh Vegan Bakery, just because they popped in here. And it's been a long time since I have visited them, but so tasty. So if you ever, if you're vegan and you're in Jersey, uh, definitely try out Papa Ganesh Vegan Bakery. They are like, you wouldn't, I wouldn't even say you wouldn't know it's vegan, because clearly it's in the name, but ho, amazing, like so, so good. Um, and you know, I have a sweet tooth, so it just, they are just a joy. So, okay, back to studying. Um, da-da-da-da-da, "And there was no doubt that they represented beliefs that were, um, for the period from very old. The Kometi U seemed to have reasoned thus, "Since the physical heart is taken from the body before mummification, and the body has need of another to act as the source of life and movement in its new life, another must be put into its place." "But a stone heart, whether made of lapis lazuli or carnelian, is only a stone heart after all, and even though by means of prayers, um, properly recited, it prevents the physical heart from being carried off by those who quote plunder hearts. It possesses nothing of itself which can be turned into account in giving new life and being to the body in which it lies. But the, um, scarab beetle or keper itself possesses remarkable powers. And if a figure of a, uh, keper be made and the proper words of power be written upon it, not only protection of the deceased's physical heart, but also new life and existence will be given unto him or her, clearly, um, whose body it is attached." Moreover, this, I keep wanting to say scarab, because this was here, but it is what it is. Um, da-da-da-da-da-da. "Moreover, the keper was the type of the symbol of the god kepera. The invisible power of creation which propelled the sun across the sky." So again, that picture of that, um, dung beetle pushing that dung to get from one place to another, to nurture and kind of take care of its, um, offspring, if you will. So again, that, that visualization makes sense. Uh, I don't know. "The particular beetle chosen by the Kometi U to copy for amulets belonged to a family of dung feeding..." Lord, they done did some scientific words on me, y'all. Might as well be unicorns, wowzers. "Which live in tropic countries. The species are generally of black hue." Y'all, oh, I'm not gonna get off on that tangent. But I'm about tired of people telling me I'm black. That is all I'm gonna say about that. That was a whole thing this past week. Not fun, especially when sir and or ma'am. Back to the text, because that's why we're here. "Um, 'The species are generally of black hue, but amongst them are to be found some adorned with the richest metallic colors.'" Ooh, super English, because it has the u in there, colors. "A remarkably peculiarity exists in the structure and situation of the hind legs, which are placed so near the extremity of the body and so far from each other as to give the insect a most extraordinary appearance when walking. This peculiar formation is nevertheless particularly serviceable, uh, to its possessor in rolling balls of ex..." Oh, okay, Budge, give me all the words. Excrementatious. When was the last time you used that word? I'm about to, actually, you know what, I'm about to add that to my little vocab list. Like you being excrementatious today. People would just be looking at it like, what the crap are you talking about? All right, "So, rollie balls of excrementatious matter in which they enclose their eggs. These balls are full of, uh, are the first irregular and soft, but by degrees during the process of rolling along become rounded and harder. They are propelled by means of the hind legs. Sometimes these walls are an inch and a half to two inches in diameter, and rolling them along the beetles, um, stand, um, upon their heads, or almost upon their heads." So it's like they're walking backwards, I guess you would say, is the easiest way to say it. Um, yeah, now I'm like, I'm totally blaming this on my headache, but I'm like, you ever, you, you see those videos of like people twerking on their head? Like, why didn't I just have that imagery? Like, oh, that's what that looks like. Anyway, all right, let me stop being silly. Um, all right, "These, uh, maneuvers have for their objects the burying of the balls and holes which the insects have previously dug for their reception, and it is upon the dung thus deposited that the larvae, when hatched, feed." Oh, yes, instant food, tasty. "It does not appear that these beetles have the ability to distinguish their own, uh, balls as they will seize upon these, those belonging to another in the case of having lost their own." Yeah, if you, if you're going through all them, all that trouble and popping on a handstand, as the old song goes, um, yo, I'm like, I'm like five degrees of inappropriate right now. Calm it down, get it together. I'm having a super potty mouth. Um, all right, "So, the males as well as the females assist in rolling the pellets. They fly during the hottest part of the day." Hmm, that's interesting. "Among the ancients, several curious views were held about the keper or the scarab, whether the type," and then they do a whole bunch of Latin, which I ain't even gonna try to embarrass myself, but pretend I said Latin, 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 Latin. Um, but I will show it. Oh, yeah, I forgot, it's backwards. So those are the bit, you see, you see why I'm not trying to pronounce that? How do you, how do you pronounce that A and that E together? How? I don't know. Back to the text. Parfum, la-la-la-la-la-la. Oh, so two historians back in the day said that there were, that no female scarab existed. So does that mean it's one of those species that are intersex? Is that what he's trying to say? "The last, uh, writer, so Harapolo, uh, stated that the scarab denoted only begotten because it was a creature self-produced, being unconceived by a female. He goes on to say that having made a ball of dung, the beetle rolls it from east to west, and having dug a hole, he buries it for eight, eight and twenty days." Why wouldn't he just say twenty-eight? Eight and twenty days. Uh, "On the twenty-ninth day, he opens it, throws it into water, and that's where all the larva, little baby beetles be coming out. The fact that it flies during the hottest part of the day made the insect to be identified with the sun and the ball of eggs to be compared to the sun itself." So again, examining and watching what nature does, so that we are in Maat. Look at that, love the, uh, my cats. You gotta love them. They love to make things fall down and get on my nerves. Pardon me a moment, excuse me. Uh, making my lights all fall down. Sorry about that. All right, there we go. Uh, identify the sun creature. Okay, here it goes. Um, "So the unseen power of Netur, god, made manifest under the form of the god kepera." Hate that, hate that, sorry. "Neturu kepera caused the sun to roll across the sky. The act of rolling gave to the scarab its name keper, he who rolls." Oh, so many fat jokes, so much self-loathing. Not enough time. Back to the topic. Anyways, I'm joking, y'all. "The sun contained the, um, germs of all life. As the insect ball contained the germs of the young scarab, it was identified also with the sun as a creature which produced life in a special way." Now, the Neturu kepera, now mind you, it's keper and ra, so you, uh, I have a, I have an interesting, uh, sense of humor, so don't minds me, don't minds me. Um, so they're the two together, so you could see keper by itself, or you could see kepera. Usually you will see technically the tattoo, okay. I love the way I'm like going all kind of backwards. That like didn't help at all, what am I doing? But when you see, um, the beetle unto itself, that would be keper. When you see it with the, um, the sun disc, that's how you know it's kepera, so you can like tell the difference. Um, because some people say like kepera, or you'll, it'll say like kepera or keperi. All of those are kepera, the, the two Neturu or the two energies kind of put together. Um, "Now, the Neturu kepera also represented inert but living matter, which was about to begin a course of existence. And at a very early period, it was considered to be the Netur of resurrection." Hmm, instead of Assar, that's interesting. That is interesting, because how could it be resurrection? Where it's not like other animals where they die and then their, their, uh, offspring feed off of them? It's not like that, it's more like, they're resurrected from poo? I don't, like, I'm, I'm trying to, I guess, make that connection, why resurrection? Because again, the story of Assar makes more sense, but if it's pre-dynastic, then I guess so. "And since the, um, scarab was identified with him, AKA the Netur of resurrection, that insect became once the symbol of the Neturu and type of the resurrection. But the dead human body from one aspect contained the germ of life, that is to say, the germ of a spiritual body, um, which was also called into being by names of the prayers that were recited in the ceremonies that were performed." Okay, so that does make sense. So if the body is like that big roll of poo, and you figure, you know, we're, humans are fertilizer, you know, once we're buried and gone, I know people are like, ew, why would you say that? You're so gross. But it is, people are fertilizer once they get buried. So it makes sense to have that connection, at least to me. Um, "Now, as the insect, uh, had given potential life to its eggs in the ball, so it was thought, would a model of the scarab itself, the symbol of the Neturu kepera, also give potential to the dead body upon which it was placed, always provided that the proper heka'u were first set over it when it was, you know, how they said they inscribed on it? So so long as y'all did it right, and you prayed over this thing, um, the idea of quote life to ha..." Yo, these cats, every week, any other day, they mind their business, but they see some lights in the camera and they don't know how to act. I don't know what that's about. And to you, back on topic. Um, "So essentially, like I said, if you, if the amulet is properly crafted, if it's properly prayed over, the, um, the heka'u is set over it, the words of power is set over it. Um, the idea of life appears to have attached itself to the scarab from time, um, immortal in Kemet and eastern Sudan. For, to this day, the insect is dried, pounded, and mixed with water, and then drunk by women who believe it to be unfail..." It really is this cat, I swear. And now mind you, last week, I didn't feed them. I made sure I fed them today, so that they wouldn't come and interrupt. And he asked where I should just take this phone down, he is in his face like, looking. Golly, back on task, back on task. Um, "So anyway, like I said, 'The insect is dried, pounded, mixed with water, and then drunk by women who believe it to be an unfailing specific for the production of large families.'" So it's a fertility thing. Oh, yeah, it's Nefratum who was doing that. It was not Mafda, Mafda is off being glorious as she usually is. Him, he's being the bratty little brother as he usually is. Um, I think that's really interesting. And the only reason I, I find it super interesting is I was watching, um, a video, I like, I love animals, I don't know if you could tell, but, um, I was watching this video about this person, and they were showing the snakes shedding its skin, and it was a black snake that had, um, that iridescent look to it and so on and so forth. So it reminds me of, as it says, the keper, it's black and it has that iridescence to it. Um, but I saw in a separate video that this, um, woman makes soap out of snake skin. And one, I just, in my mind, for whatever reason, I always just imagine reptiles to be stinky, like just pee use smell. Um, but the way she was explaining it in this video is like that snake skin apparently like, when you boil it down, I don't know if it's collagen, I don't know what it is, but it's something about dried snake skin that supposedly really good for, um, human skin. And, um, it's just interesting that now this is saying like, oh, well, if you pound down these bugs into a powder and drink it down, that will help with, um, fertility, because you think about it, how many things like, if it, whether it be herbs or, you know, other such things that actually do come from insects that we just don't think about? You know, whether it be coloring in our foods, part of our foods, um, you know, so the fact that he's talking about that really makes me want to research that and be like, hmm. Not to say I want to drink no, no dried up beetles, I'm just saying, I'm nosy and I want to know, is that really a thing? That's all. All right, "So, 'In ancient days, when a man wished to drive away the effects of every kind of sorcery and incantation, he might do so by cutting off the head and wings of a large beetle.'" Ooh. I'm just imagining what that would look like, um, in general, but, um, that's cool. "Uh, 'Which he boiled and laid in oil.'" Yikes. "The head and wings were then warmed up and steeped in the oil of the..." Appenet serpent? So a snake. "And when they had been once more boiled, the man was to drink the mixture." Well, how about that? I can like imagine, if this was nowadays, I could only imagine the commercial, what that would sound like, like, hey, are you plagued by sorcery and negative incantations? Well, come on down. And then they hand you this like oil from snakes and beetles, like, here you go. Ooh. That would be, that would be an interesting time in the life of Minyet. I'll, I'll let y'all know. "The amulet of this scarab has been found in Kemet in untold thousands, and the varieties are exceedingly numerous. They are made of green, um, basalts, green granite, limestone, green marble, blue paste, blue glass." Ooh, side note, I did not know, because again, I'm just a random nerdy, like-to-know type of person. And I didn't know that you could actually just buy blue paste. Like so many people sell it, um, on Etsy for like five bucks. So it's like you could use, like buy it and, you know, make mad different things out of it. I just thought that was super interesting. Um, because why would I, I never would have thought like, gee, let me go look at, look for something to make, um, amulets out of or whatever, like, I didn't know that was a thing, but it is. People have it, and they sell it, and it's not expensive. Uh, "Blue glass, um, purple, blue, and green glazed porcelain, etc. And the words of power are usually cut in outline on the base." Ooh, I have seen that, do I have one of those? I have a necklace my mother gave me once, but it's like, I can't find it. But that is true, when you look at the different, like when they show, um, the kepers, and it has that like thin little base on the bottom, and they always have, now granted, I already know when we buy stuff these days, they usually don't have true Seshmet or Netur on the actual base of it. They just have like some random made-up stuff. Um, but that's interesting, because they do, it's, it's like the keper usually looks like that, and then it's on a base like that, and then all the way around it always has words on it. Ha, 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 I feel like super cool that I just made that connection, excuse me. "In rare instances, the scarab has a human face or head, and sometimes the backs are inscribed with figures of the boat of Ra, the banu bird, the soul of Ra, and the eyes of Huru. The green stone scarabs are often set in gold and have a band of gold across and down the back where the wings join." Ooh, fancy, okay, keper. Keper was like, I could get fancy, I know I'm all about rolling this poo, but. "Sometimes the whole back is gilded. Sometimes the base is covered with a plate of gold upon which the words of power have been stamped or engraved. Occasionally, the base of the scarab is made in the form of a heart, um, a fact which proves the closeness of the relationship which existed between the amulets of the heart and the scarab. In late times, um, that is to say, around twelve hundred BCE, large funeral scars were set in pylon-shaped pictorals made of porcelain of various colors upon which the boat of the sun was either traced in colors or worked in relief. And the scarab is placed so as to appear to be carried on the boat. The left stands are set and on the right never had." The oldest, oh, and he references that he gave a summary in another book that he wrote. Uh, so if you wanted more information about that, references book. Um, all right, see, now I don't went down, okay. So the oldest green stone funeral scarab known to Budge, that guy, not, wait, not that guy, that guy, just to make sure, people were like, Minyet out here spreading lies, like, no, 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 I meant, I meant, I meant the author. "So the oldest green stone funeral scarab known to Budge is in the British Museum." Yo, he's like seriously name dropping, this is like not the first time he did that. Where he's just like, oh, you want to know more, come to the museum that I helped put together. Oh, you want to know more, read my own books, I'm like, in twenty-twenty-one, you are not like, as a scholar, you're not supposed to consistently reference yourself as a source. Like that's considered poor scholarship. I don't know what the, what the, um, standards for scholarship were back in late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds, but that just seems a little fishy. Anyway, so, um, "The name of the man of whom it was made, um, and it was an official from the temple of Amen, was traced on it in light colored paint, which afterward varnished." Oh, and then it was afterwards varnished, sorry. "There are no quote words of power on this interesting object, he says. Um, 'When once the custom of burying scarabs with the bodies of the dead became recognized, the habit of wearing them as ornaments by the living came into fashion.'" Hey, hey. I'm like permanently in fashion, oh, got me, okay, let me calm it down. Um, "And as a result, scarabs of almost every sort and kind may be found by the thousands and many collections. It is probable that the number of varieties of them were only limited by the availability, I'm sorry, by the ability, of those who manufactured them in ancient days to invent new sorts." Oh, so it, it became, it went from the sacred to the profane, I would imagine. I don't think I'm understanding, Tatiana, you said that's true, would this be scholarship ads? Like in addition, advertisements, that part I'm, I'm not quite understanding. I'm like, I'll, I'll, I'll keep reading, but I'll come back just in case. Um, all right, blah, 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 it became fashionable, it went from the sacred to the profane. So basically, it went from being sacred to secular, um, in manner. Uh, oh, okay. "The use of the scarab amulet passed into Western Asia and into several countries uh, which lay on the Mediterranean, and those who wore it seem to have been attached to it, much in the same idea of its early inventors. The amulet bought the deceased the protection of the blood of Osset, and in the words of her power, it will be remembered that she raised the dead body of Assar by means of the words of her..." By her words of power, my bad. "And, um, the legend that affects that she smote, um, Ra with severe sickness." Oh, yeah, when she did Ra dirty. Oh, 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 okay. Okay, I get it now, okay, so she was saying that, yes, he was advertising for himself. He was just bigging himself up, he was like, what, my ego is already enormous, but hmm, what could my name dropping in my own book hurt? Hmm, people are funny. All right, um, blah, 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 blah. So essentially, long story short, Osset was mad nosy, and she was like super strong and super powerful, but she never knew Ra's secret name. So she did, she did him dirty and made a snake, the snake bit him, and he's like, oh snap, I didn't make this snake, where this snake came from? And Osset was like, if you give me your secret name, I'mma help you out. And he's like, I am this, I am this, I am this, she's like, that's not your secret name. Give me a secret name and I will, I will get rid of this creature, I will get rid of him. And eventually Ra gave in, and because he was about to die, and Osset, um, got the secret name, and then pretty much it's... got the secret name and then pretty much essentially made it so like that's the reason why uh Rod doesn't walk amongst us that is why he's far away like in you know up with the sun in the solar bark that's why he don't come down to earth cuz Osset tried to kill him cuz she was being nosy cuz she wanted to be all powerful so lesson learned just cuz they the nature route don't ma- don't mean that you can't learn how to not be a pathological version of that certain nature route cuz there are both sides that's my eye you have the positive which we look at but you know there's also that negative too that you wanna be like being a know it all is not a good thing not all the time that's so funny one of my students said that to another one of my students today exactly that in class they were like you think you know everything you gonna run across the wrong person and you gonna you gonna get yourself in trouble like it's true there's consequences so um the next one the amulet of the that so that's it right there now to me this here looks like a um what you call it it looks like a jet to me so I don't know why it says it's a that cuz it's I'm like I'm like moving forward like maybe they got it somewhere else I'm like I don't see it nowhere else so the the that usually looks kinda like a T with lazy arms or like an ank with lazy arms that like loop so it's like if you're following my finger so it looks kinda like that at the top and then where it meets it kinda goes down and then uh in the middle it looks like the bottom so oh why did I just close the book darn it ha found it yeah totally it looks like a a jet pillar but it says that so I don't know I don't yeah and he's talking about the fat I wonder if that's a mistake oh see look cuz he's calling it oh snap y'all I made a mistake I skipped a whole page I skipped a whole page my bad oh I so uh my bad let me rewind real quick so we was talking about the um the keper the sign of the keper and how that amulet was being used um I'm like let me read real quick the ring of Haru blah 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 I'm trying to make sure I didn't like leave anything oh no I gotta go back cuz I'm like wait a minute why is it talking about the that now mind you it still says the that but mind you like that's the symbol of the that right there like see how I said look like a lazy ank or like a a lazy tea or something I don't know but going back to the scarab don't laugh at my pain I said I had a headache I'm I'm done so um but this looks cool um to read and the ceremony of the beetle apparently so there was a whole ceremony we're told to take the beetle sculpted it and described it as below and place it on a paper table and under the table there shall be a pure linen cloth under it put some olive wood and set on the middle of the table a small censer where mer and uh Kyfi shall be offered so Kyfi is uh another incense yeah looks yeah like a lazy but like when you try to tie a bow like cute or at least that was me back in the day and I could never get it right and it would always be like that's what the bet be looking like but I anyway focus alright so anyways um and have at hand a small vessel of Kyra soul light took me a second I had to figure out how to read that into which ointment of lilies or mer or cinnamon shall be put and take the ring and lay it on the in the ointment having first made it pure and clean offered up to the censure with Kyfi and mer leave the ring for three days and take it out and put it in a safe place as a celebration let it there lie near at hand some pure loaves and such fruits that are in season and having made another sacrifice upon vine sticks during the sacrifice take the ring out of the ointment anoint thyself with the unction from it so like the the mixture cuz I remember looking that word up previously thou shalt anoint thyself early in the morning and turn towards the east shall pronounce the words written below the beetle shall be carved out of precious emeralds bore it pass a gold wire through it and beneath the beetle carve the holy uh Osset and having consecrated it above the written as above written use it the proper days for the celebration were the seventh ninth tenth twelve fourteen sixteen twenty first twenty fourth and twenty fifth so y'all are gonna have to wait until next month cuz we already on the twenty eighth so we don't miss this ceremony so if you would have wanted to do this ceremony you can't because it's not one of the auspicious days from the beginning of the month on other days abstain so see what I tell you the spell shall be recited began I am Jehuti the inventor and founder of medicines and letters come to me thou art under the earth rise up to me thou great spirit oh so that's interesting so when they were saying before about wearing the um the keper and you could get it and you know all kind of fashion and this that and the third essentially it it wasn't just like something to rock like it was actually a sacred item like that's what you were supposed to do so if you got the um scarab and like let's say it said you had like if you wanted to do a necklace or whatever you're supposed to like do this ceremony I guess to that is so interesting so FYI for those who are practicing commit to you in the twenty first century page forty two of this book is where you can find that specific um ritual I'm like kinda feeling that I'm like I'm gonna do the horrible thing and like fold and give it a dog ear like let me keep that alright so the amulet of the buckle AKA the fat like we was talking about before only he called it the buckle so the fat not the amulet represented the buckle or of the girdle of Osset and is usually made of carnelian red jasper red glass and other substances of red color it is sometimes made of gold and substances covered with gold it is associated with the oh my gosh what is with this man and giving me Ro- Roman numerology C L so I remember last week the L was fifty but I don't know what a C means in Roman numerals so if one of y'all could Google that and help me out I would very much appreciate you but maybe a hundred and fifty sixth chapter if that's what a C means um of the book of how do I the part M Haru which is frequently inscribed upon it which reads the blood of Osset the strength of Osset and the words of power of Osset shall be mighty to act his powers to protect this great and divine being and to guard him from him that would do unto him anything that he holdeth in abomination definitely keeping this page um I feel like I wanna make as I go through this book cuz again the reason why I wanted to read this book was all about like everyday rituals everyday um things that I might want um like if I wanna have protection if I wanna have prosperity or little things like that I want to aim as a practitioner in the twenty first century to emulate or try to bring it back uh huh okay wait a minute hold on see yeah okay a hundred so it was a hundred and fifty sixth chapter thank you I'm like and y'all came in like right at the same time I appreciate y'all so that's dope like one okay so you already have the one with the um scarab you got that ritual now you got this um this is like so dope I'm gonna keep reading before I keep commenting though but before the buckle was attached to the neck of the deceased where the rubric ordered it to be placed it had to be dipped in water with Ancom flowers I need to Google that too cuz I'm I like what is A N K H A M Ancom flowers what flowers are those are those lilies are that like what are those again if you feel like Googling I wouldn't I would be very happy I would be very thankful um so before you attached it you had to place it or dip it in water that um these flowers were steeped in and when the words of the chapter of the buckle given above had been recited over it the amulet bought the deceased the protection of the blood of Osset yes and Osset is one of my nature rule one of my like long term life nature so I'm kinda feeling like a tattoo idea is coming to mind if not some sort of jewelry cuz that sounds if it's all about the protection and it's just interesting because I also understand and I know it doesn't say it here but I know it's supposed to have something to do with like your menses and the power of like uterine blood you know I mean we can kinda extrapolate and unpack that in so many other directions um so I don't wanna get too far off but like that's like as a woman as a woman who is aiming to heal herself as a woman who's aiming to reclaim my religious and spiritual um self at like just on so many levels having an amulet like that um with that kind of prayer associated to it or with that kinda attached to it is like freaking powerful so freaking powerful um alright so the amulet of the but it's a jet pillar again so that's it right there and I know that's a representative of Assar but let's read let's see what budge gotta say this time so this amulet probably represents the tree trunk of um in which Osset concealed the dead body of her husband and the four crossbars indicate the four cardinal points it became a symbol of the highest religious importance to the commit to you and the setting up of the that at Buris which symbolized the reconstituting of the body of Assar which was one of the most solemn of all ceremonies performed in connection with the worship of Assar that that represents neither the Mason's table nor the nilometer as some have thought oh that's a whole other conversation but okay cuz it's interesting how some people be saying certain things are connected when they don't be but okay whatever go continue reading so that represents neither the me oh I said that as some have thought is associated with the hundred and fifty fifth chapter of the Purim Haru which reads rise thou up Osar thou are thou hast thy backbone oh still heart thou hast the fastenings of thy neck and back oh still heart place thou upon and then it has like a picture so I gotta I was like getting into it too place thou place thou thyself upon thy base I put water beneath thee and I bring unto thee a that of gold that thou mayest rejoice therein like the buckle like that that the jet had to be dipped in water of the Ancom flower and had that had been steeped and laid upon the neck of the um deceased to whom it gave the power to reconstitute the body and become a perfect cool or spirit in the Duat or like the afterlife uh on coffins the right hand of the deceased grasps the buckle and left that that both are made of wood notwithstanding again I don't know why he's using these other like names or maybe that's just like period the way they said it during that period both are made of wood notwithstanding the fact that the rubric of the chapter of the it says T orders that 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 be made of gold okay that is interesting see now the first thing I think of is like well what are the properties of gold that the jet which should be made in gold like is it the fact that it's a Sar and that he's the king that he's the like why why so more things for me to look up and Google alright so the amulet of the pillow so that's that thing AKA you don't wanna mess up your hair let me stop this amulet is a model of the pillow which is found placed under the neck of the deceased in the coffin and the object is to lift up and protect the head of the deceased it is usually made of hematite so so far if we doing the whole crystal thing we we taking stock they said carnelian they they have named like so many different uh stones thus far so hematite carnelian red jasper turquoise like all authentic from back in the day just putting it out there alright uh lift up and protect the head of the deceased it was made of hematite and is inscribed with the text of the hundred and fifty sixth chapter so he keeps talking about these two chapters he's very reliant on these two chapters uh which reads thou art lifted up oh sick one that liest post rate they lift up thy head to the horizon thou art raised up and thus triumph by reason of what hath been done for thee excuse me Pata hath overthrown thine enemies which was ordered to be done for thee thou art Haru the son of Het Haru who gives back the head after the slaughter thy head shall not be carried away from thee after the slaughter thy head shall never be shall never never be carried away from thee alright so side note commentary and this is Min yet commentary so just going back it did say Haru the son of Het Haru now again if we had all the different gnomes or all the different if you will ar- areas from ancient Kemet they all had their own kind of versions of the stories and they had the um the nature rule kind of some were really big in some places some were not as big in some places and some told the stories a little different than others so in some stories it'll be one on nature and then in another one it might be the idea that they get uh kinda squished together is one uh so similar to how we were talking about keper or kepera um so it's two keper and raw and they put them together because of whatever the energy is or um what they're looking for out of the both of them at the same time there was something else I was about to say oh it also depended on the time period cuz depending on the time period you might have two nature be very very separate uh whereas later in in time they get more blended so um it depends on when the story was written where it comes from it's like a lot of those moving parts um it it there there was no specific one how can I put it it was it was okay so when it came to like the rituals and things like that it was very dependent on what the local or localities kind of uh emphasized and what they needed cuz again it's about uh when it comes to religious observance and ritual it has to do with the environment it has to do with you know like if you are closer up to the Mediterranean Sea you might not necessarily have certain or emphasize certain parts of the uh religious canon you know it's just um it you you kinda gotta blend together that whole um anthropological look versus straight what the book says versus straight oh I was about to throw shade let me be quiet that's all I'm gonna say about that alright the amulet of the vulture this amulet was intended to cause power of Osset as the divine mother to be a protection for the deceased it was made of gold in the form of a vulture oh I'm like right there and I'm like I'm a I'm a naughty sesh metu nature um student because I can't remember what letter that is I'm like is that a A is that the same vulture for the A I think maybe Um, this amulet was intended to call, oh, I said that, blah, 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 sorry. Uh, for the protection of the deceased, it was made of gold in the form of a vulture hovering in the air with outstretched wings and holding in each talon the symbol of life. AKA onks, so we've seen that um kinda kind of imagery before, I'm like, I wonder if he has a picture of it in here somewhere. Probably not, because that would just be too convenient. Let me see if he had it on this one. Nope, of course not. Hey, Minette, would it be super convenient for you to have this picture? Yes, of course, am I gonna give it to you? No. Thanks, Budge, thanks for looking out. Uh, but we've seen this before, um if you've ever visited like museums. Especially when it comes later, I remember seeing it on um. So I don't know um the Seshmetu nature words for the different, but if you know like. You have the um, the sarcophagus and then it has like. There's one smaller and then it gets bigger and bigger and bigger and then it becomes in stone. So the ones that I've seen are like the top of the stone and it would have like this uh the vulture. Holding the um onks and things like that. I remember seeing that at, if I'm not mistaken, the Field Museum out in Chicago. I'm pretty sure the Museum of Modern Art over in New York probably has it too. But I have. I I have been to the Field Museum so many times out in Chicago, um I'm pretty sure that's where I saw, like, I've been there more than I've been to MoMA. So I'm pretty sure that's where I saw it. Uh, but I digress, actually, I could have seen it at the Louvre too. That's a big exhibit, if you ever get the chance to go to Paris and go to the Louvre. Let me tell you, get a multi-day pass because it's a lot to see, but just. The exhibit on Kemet is like. It's so big, when I went with my mom. Um, she and she'd been to Paris like twice before when she was younger, so she was like, we're only here for you, I've seen all of this, I went and. Seen the Mona Lisa, wasn't impressed, sorry. I was very surprised how big a lot of those paintings really are, like they're literally from the ceiling to the floor big. Didn't know that, you know, cuz you see him in books or you see him online, they're like, oh, it's that big or whatever, and you see in person, you're just like. But anyway, I digress, that's off topic, so going into the um. The museum at, at the Louvre to see. And you know the Louvre because it has all the glass mercuts or all the glass pyramids, so you know which one it is. Like, I think I spent maybe four hours and I literally. Didn't even really get to take my time, um because I didn't realize how big it was. And I just, I really didn't realize how big that was, so um. It's, it's like, I was just going around and my concern was like, okay, if I can't sit and read everything. Cuz that's the kinda like person I am when I go to museums, I'm read everything and. I was just like, well, I could just sit here and take pictures, I took so many pictures, my camera overheated. And I didn't even get through the whole thing and that was four hours, like literally, if you ever get the chance to go. Plan all day, like it's just to see the Kemet exhibit. Like, plan all day, like ten o'clock in the morning until they close, like plan for it. Because it's just so much to see and there were so many rooms that like, I walked in there, walked around, just kinda. Tried to take it in and and walked back out, like I I couldn't even read it, like especially the room, I think it's. Like towards the end of the exhibit where it's like all the different sarcophagi and. And um and like the different, I again, I don't, I don't know the names in um Seshmetu nature, but like the death masks and stuff like that. Like seriously, it's blows my mind, like the next thing I wanna do is go to the British Museum so that I can, I mean. You know, now that he's name dropped so many times, um I wanna see all of these different things, like I wanna actually see the papris of Annie. And um, and that was the other thing that was really cool about the Louvre, like they had it. They had all the the papari and it was like un um. Like flattened out, I don't know why, I can't think of the name of it, but it was like a whole room. Of like one papris and then under it, another one, and it was just like so like. You know, you, cuz we're so used to modern time books, so it's the fact that it was just that long. And then I I just, I remember thinking to myself like, my gosh, they had no whiteout back then. So you made a mistake on a papris that long, like, oh my god. Um, and I mean, they 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 do know that, you know, mistakes are common and things like that because of everything was handwritten and copied and so on and so forth. Um, and actually, a lot of the times, the. I won't say this about the papris, but they say um. When you look at the inscriptions on like the stones and stuff like that. That when they are, when there were mistakes, they would cover it over in plaster and then like re kinda do it. And then over time, like, you know, the plaster falls or whatever, but they said, um. Most of the people who are doing the inscriptions couldn't read or write. They would just copy what they were told to do or copy what they, you know, whatever. And um they would find the mistakes when the um priests and and things would come along and they'd be reading it and be like. That's not right, you gotta fix that or whatever, so I thought that was so interesting that. The people who were carving all of these things were illiterate, like I, for some reason in my mind, I would have thought they were like. Artisan scribes of some sort, but they weren't, so I thought that was kinda cool. Random, random something or other, I'm like, wait a minute, I'm just going, I wanna know, what time is it? Oh, it's almost time, alright, so I'mma finish this thing, the part about the vulture. Sorry, back on task. Um, alright, so it has the um, the vulture. She has her outstretched wings, she has the two onks in her hand, placed on the neck on the day of the funeral. So uh with this amulet of the hundred and fif. The seventh chapter of the Purim Haru was associated and it was ordered by the rubric to which it was recited. I also kinda lowkey wanna see this rubric. And I'm like, I'm such a teacher cuz I always picture a rubric looking like one things, I'm like, yeah, no, there ain't no whiteout. So uh Osset cometh and houverth over the city. And she goeth about seeking the secret hab- habitions of Haru as he emerged from his papris swamps. And she raises up his shoulder, which is in evil ca- case. He is made one of the company in the divine boat and the sovereignty of the whole world is decreed to him. He hath warred mightily and he maketh his deeds to be remembered. He hath made the fear of him to exist and awe of him to have its being. His mother, the mighty lady, protected him and she hath transferred her power unto him. Alright, so the first illusion is to the care which uh Osset showed to. And now mind you, I'm trying to like decipher period English and period English, English. And read it without tripping up simultaneously. So essentially, the first illustration is to show uh how Osset. Uh cared for Haru when she was bringing him up in the papris swamps, so if you know the story. You know, Satash was out here killing his brother cuz you know, slept with his wife, got her pregnant. He wa- he was not fertile, so you know, that could make people mad, and it's supposed to be your bro. Don't nobody want they bro impregnating they wife, like that's a super slap in the face, and then on top of that. He's super beloved and people kinda hate on you, even though they kinda have a little bit of a good reason to hate on you. But that's still not cool, nobody likes that, nobody wanna be treated like that, so yeah, he killed him, he killed him twice. Maybe he went a little overboard, but again, it's not like a sar was just chilling one day and 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 Satash just straight up killed him, like nah, sar kinda did him super dirty. Just saying, like, how you gonna get my girl pregnant and give her a baby and I can't, that hurt a man's pride. Honey, shoot, that hurt a woman's pride, but anyway, I digress, so. Uh, the reason why I'm saying that is after uh Osset had Haru. Clearly Satash is still coming for blood, like he is like, oh, he, what is the word, progeny? He is the offspring of, I know he my brother, but he my enemy cuz he did me dirty. So they went and they were hiding in the papris swamps, so if you wanna think. In the Christian um manner, I forget, was it Moses or? I kinda feel good that I forgot who it was. I'm not gonna lie, um but I think it was Moses, um you know, and and she put him in the basket and she put him out there. So think that kinda like imagery where like, you know, Osset is in the papris swamp, she's trying, you know, hiding from her brother. Killed her husband, like she on the run, she on the run, so she, but um. If you think about it as a woman or even as a man, think about what it must be like to try to take care of your child. Under the threat of violence constantly. You know, and we think about, think about that in times of war, think about what moms and 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 mothers have had to do. To provide for their kids. You know, like I was telling this story about, uh, we were talking about genocide in one of my classes and I said, I remember. When I went to China and one of the people talked about like. The lengths that their mother went, not just to get the body of her husband and find out what happened to her husband. But like to bring food back for her, the woman and her, like I think it was her younger brother or younger sister, I can't remember. And um. I mean, the woman was pretty much like sleeping with the enemy and not just the enemy like. I know not everybody's into history, but please, look at what the Japanese did. In World War Two, look at what they did in Korea, look at what they did in China, look at what they did in the Philippines, Indonesia, Australia. They made the Nazis look like kindergarten, like wowzers, the stuff that they did, so. But I digress, so think about that large and horrible of an enemy and you are sleeping with them, you are doing all kinds of things. With people who you know are like horrible, nasty, dirty, like raping ninety year old women, nasty, dirty. And putting yourself in that vulnerable position so that you can bring food into the mountains where your kids are freezing. Like. Like, tha- that's a whole state of being, like that level of love. To take care, so like, I say all of that to say. You know, Osset really, really was going through it cuz again, it was her sister who had a baby. With her husband, like, so she had to deal with that, she had to deal with her husband getting killed, she had to deal with her husband cheating on her. She had to deal with, now he left and she didn't have no kid, now she needs to try to bury him to make sure that his spirit is good, like. I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot to go through and then on top of that, you gotta bring up a child. And under the threat of being killed? That's a lot, that is a lot, so. You're not only just talking about that, uh and the second to come, uh to his combat with Satash. Whom he vanquished through the might of Osset, so the story goes on that like as Haru grew older and. You know, he wanted to avenge his father because this dude went and killed your pops, like, okay, so, but it was through. Um, Osset and her guidance and cultivating and making sure that he grew up to be strong, that he was well trained, that he was wise. That he wasn't just some murderous guy going to kill his uncle, like. You know, you keep a cool head, like you can't just be some hothead, um if you've ever heard of, what is that, um in the Godfather movie? And the Godfather said to the son like, nah, we can't do that. And what ended up happening because the son, was that was Fredo, Fredo got shot in the boat, oh gosh, was it Sonny? Was his name, I can't remember, but it was like the older brother and what they do, they shot him up because he was a hothead, he was always. On the go, you gotta keep, you know, you have to, when you have certain goals, you can't be all up in your emotions, you can't be in your feelings. But she instilled that into Haru, she made sure that, yo, I know. You you wanna avenge your father, this is, you know, trying to restore my eye. But you can't just go out screaming and hollering, you have to have that. Uh, wise mind and so on and so forth, so the only reason he was successful is because she, as we say now, raised him right. Um, that doesn't mean that he didn't have mistakes and that he didn't make mistakes cuz he clearly did, those are other stories. But that is what I'm trying to get at with this, like just the fact of like how true, and that's one reason why I really do love. Osset and I suppose connect with Osset because, you know, life is a crazy thing. We go through a lot. Even even, you know, back then, now, human beings, we go through so many things, we put each other through so many things. We overcome so many traumatic things that it's. Kinda crazy like when you really sit back and think about it, um but again, our fortitude, our being able to overcome. Um, is put into us by our mother, even if we have a crappy mom. Like, even if she's bad, you you're like, oop, I ain't gonna be like that, or oop. I'mma emulate that, but not exactly the way she did it, so you know, just that that strength and that protection that, you know, with the archetype of what a. True, wise, nurturing, loving mother is supposed to give to you. So um. That is the end of the amulet of the vulture, so next page is page forty nine, so that's where we're gonna leave off and pick up next week. Um, with amulet of the collar of gold, so that's number seven. So yeah, I guess that's the long and short of it, I had to go put the book down, so um remember. Every Thursday, we are right here, six o'clock or six PM Eastern Standard Time. Excuse me, if in the meantime, you want to have other conversations about uh comedic living in the twenty first century. Um, today is the full moon, so I'm hoping that you all will be doing your full moon work. Um, you know, because uh the ancient committee was were all about observing, um. Observing the skies, they were all about um observing cycles and things like that, so a full moon is a cycle. And um, you know, with certain cycles, just like we said, you know, there's a rubric and there's a certain thing that we're supposed to do, so. Um, I'm hoping that you all will utilize the um full moon tonight, that um. Whatever you all need to release, you can release, uh definitely journal, take a bath, um. I mean, there's so many different things you could do and I don't wanna get into it too, too much, but um. I'm hoping that um all of you have a fruitful, full moon, I know Mercury retrograde. Is uh just round the corner and if you're uh um run by Mercury, such as myself. Virgo here, um, you know, take it easy, you know, kinda try to make sure we keep manob and clear minds and. Uh, just, it's a month, we can get through this. But let let we try to keep our our minds on correct, so uh happy new moon, I believe today is the wolf moon, the wolf moon. So um, good luck with your practice tonight, and like I said, if you want to share what you did. Uh, today to observe, if you want to just join and have a conversation about anything. You know, in general about being comedic in twenty first century, um feel free to join us over on Facebook, um comedic, um. Oh my god, why can't I remember this, I say it all the time, oh my god, I know, I wrote it down. Gosh, comedic living in the twenty first century, that's so easy, I don't know how I forgot. I'm like, I definitely need to drink some water, put on some lavender and just turn the lights out and just kinda. Relax for a second before I go do my full moon stuff, so. Um, stay safe, I will see all of you next week.